Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Um, my name is uh Dr. Olad Ubo Ajayalim. And um and we'll be taking you uh verse three one zero, which is introduction to marketing. So we'll be looking at this uh first study session. So um which is basically like an introduction to because. At the end of this um study session, you should be able to define marketing. You should be able to list the key concepts of marketing. Uh you should be able to um identify the markets and types of marketing. You should be able to discuss the evolution of marketing. You should be able to explain the micro functions of marketing and as well as the micro, macro um functions of marketing. So. What is marketing? Uh we're going to look at two definitions of marketing today. Uh the first one is that marketing is the process of um planning and executing the conception, pricing, promotion and distribution of ideas, goods and services to create exchanges that satisfy individual and organizational objectives. Now, what do you mean by that? Um let's take the keywords one by one. Let's look at it. Marketing is a process, which means that it is something that there is an action going on and it is a process of planning. So it includes some planning and executing, which means that you carry out uh the action of uh uh the conception, pricing and promotion. So that means you are going to look at at goods and services. So how do you conceive them? How do you plan for them? What who really wants and how do you get them together for them? And um what price will you be selling it at? How will you tell people about it? And how will you get from the producer to the customer? That's distribution of ideas, goods and services. So you know that products are goods, physical goods and also the services. To create exchanges, exchanges, we'll still be covering many of these things later on, but exchanges mean that the goods or the services is coming from the producer and is going to be exchanged with the consumer uh for money. I have two participants that have raised their hands. Um iPhone and Uluwashi Yezikel. Is there a problem? Please, can iPhone unmute? And explain what the problem is? Hello? Yes, can you unmute and tell us what the problem is? Uluwashi Yezikel. Can you unmute and tell us what the problem is?
Okay, Dr. Ajayalim, I think you need to increase the volume of your mic, maybe it's better.
Okay. And yeah, is it better?
Better now.
Oh wow, okay. Sorry, it's uh alright. So. It is better now, right? Okay. Alright, so so um the service, so there's an exchange, it means that there's an exchange from the producer to the consumer uh which is the product being exchanged for money. And that product is supposed to satisfy an individual or an organization's objectives. So those are the key concepts of that definition. Let's look at another definition. Um marketing is a social and managerial process by which individuals and groups obtain what they need and want through creating and exchanging products and value with others. So um let's also look at the key terms in that definition. It's a social process, which means that it is for, it is, the process is carried out by human beings. It means that some human beings will have to relate in order to uh to carry out that process. And it's a managerial process, which means that it is carried out by um management of a business. So it's not, it's not the salespeople that do marketing, which is a common error. Where many would think that sales is marketing, sales is not marketing. It's a function of marketing, but marketing is a managerial process. It takes place from the top part of the, from the, from the top uh um management of the, of the, of the company, of the organization. So it's a process by which individuals and groups, which is either you as a person or a group of consumers, obtain what they need and want through creating and exchanging. You can see that word again, exchanging products and value with others. So. Now, these are the key concepts that we have in marketing. The first one we have is needs. So um a need is that innate, you know, primal thing that, that uh all human beings uh have. So basically, there are different kinds of needs. We have the need which is like hunger, we have the need for shelter, we have the need for, for food, for security, things like that. Can any other person, you can always, if you have any questions, you can always send me a chat message uh and I'll try to respond as I go along. Um. Is it still? Um I hope you can still hear me. Anyway, so we have that, it needs that, those innate desires that all human beings have. Uh and then let's go to the next one, wants. Uh wants are physical products or services that, you know, that human beings use to fulfill the need. So now, for instance, if you have the need of hunger, the want is the um ebah or rice that you would make in order to fulfill the need. Alright, so who can, um who can also send me, I want you to send me messages um of different needs and what and wants you think that will satisfy those needs. So that I can know that you understand difference in needs and wants. Please send me messages. We'll give it a bit, thirty seconds for you to send me the message. Different needs and then the ones you think will, will, will satisfy them. Menuna says, can I move the airpiece? Okay, let me see.
A message. Uh Menuna, it is better. Yes, Emma Udu, I can see thirst water. Um Oyegi soap to bath, yes. Yes, okay, um Kendi Loko, this is, it's better now, so thank you for that. Yes, Linda leads are things that humans can't do without. Heat, fun, yes. Clothing, wants the car, yes. Uh Grace, uh it says, okay, better now. Adetunno says shelter, clothing, yeah, okay. Alright, so I can see that, at least you have been able to grasp uh the concept of what we're talking about. Now, demands um are similar to, to, to wants. So demand is, now, you know that you, the want is clothing, so the demand is the brand of clothing. So for instance, you know, you have designer clothing like Gucci, like um, like uh DKNY, you know. So those are, okay, thank you, Adetunno. I think, I thought the iPhone would actually be better. So the demands are the, are the, the, what you want, basically, the specific wants that you want. Uh and then we also have products, products is what the company is producing to sell. Alright, and then we have customer satisfaction, which is the degree that um that product is able to satisfy or that the degree of happiness that the customer gets from the use of the product. Alright, and then we can see the other word, the exchange, which is what I've explained to you before. Exchange is um when the product goes from the producer to the consumer and the consumer pays for the product. So there's an exchange of the product and money. And then we have marketing and selling, which is um the noise, the promotion that uh carried out by the producer once the product is ready for sale. Alright, so let's move on. So now we are going to look at the different kinds of markets that we have. We have different kinds of markets. Um the first type we have is consumer markets, which is the one that you and I go to. Um where it's the one that concerns you and I, basically as individuals. Uh and it's made up of supermarkets, um your Gaba market, your Balogu market. And the, the products there are products that are meant for individual consumption. Can somebody, you know, uh give me an example of uh what's a product that will be, that will be sold in consumer markets? You can quickly test, uh chat me with, with um products that can be sold in consumer markets. Let's give thirty seconds for that. Alright, thank you, Adimola, Ordejabi, you said rice. Uh Hazan Tadudense is clothes. Uh home appliances, Tamila Adimola. Dari, Kendi, Loko Di, Joseph, Solomon Yam. Alright, so I, I see that you have been able to understand the concept. Alright, let's move, let's move, okay, that's enough, that's enough, let's, let's, let's move on. So um the next type of market is what we call the producer market or industrial market. Now, in the producer market, what um the kind of product that you get in the producer market are raw materials, producers who use to create um those finished goods that you and I would buy. Alright, so for instance, um a producer, a good um, a good product in a, in a producer market is flour. You understand? Flour will be used by the um bakers and the um people baking bread and all that to make their, 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 their products. So flour is a raw material. Um can we get another example of more raw materials? Quickly chat me. Yes, Adazi, the producer sells raw materials like timber, flour, yeah. Yes, cocoa. Adetunno, iron, yes. Um Adetunno, cutting, yes, uh no, Imahuudot, cutting, yes, that's also true. Yes, citric acids, uh this is Solomon Kasava, Victor Muna, butter for, and sugar for cakes and bread, yes, yes. Uh lumber, limestone, yes, that's all true. Somebody is joining on the screen, please try not to join on the screen. Um yes, I, I do believe in Goosla, Kudo. Okay, let's move on. So the next market that we have is the government market. Now, the government market is special, is a specialized market because they are buying things that people would not ordinarily see to buy. You know, it's products that you or I would not necessarily ever buy throughout our life. Like for instance, a good product for the government market is tar for building roads. You understand? Or um uh what else? Or uh those big cables for electricity, you know, those big ones. They are not going to be made by, they are not going to be used by individuals or even companies. Only government will buy things like that. And it's usually, uh the government market is usually through a contract process where they would advertise who want to as somebody who can supply this product and, you know, people will put in their bids and then they will pick the best one. Uh apart from cable and um, so can any other person give me an example of what can be sold, what can be a product? Yes, fertilizer, yes, that's true. Uh guns for war, uh cola only good. Uh asphalt, yes. Aditunno war equipment, yes. Um Joseph, hospital drugs, that's true, so as towards for cable distribution, that's true. Street lights, Rashid, good one. Oscar, you said land. Land, man, government already owns the land, you know. Government already owns all the land, so they don't need to buy land. Um Victor, tractors for road, yes. Um Lucky, may you say what about bonds? Well, bonds are, are, are products for the consumer market. Because the people that are going to buy bonds, the customers of bond or the consumers of bonds is the, is individuals or investment uh groups, which are also considered as a consumer market. So cement for construction, yes. Pipelines, yes. Alright, okay, so let's move on, so I can see you have grasped it. Ogothu, Tuwo, you said treasury bills, treasury bills um are also consumed by individuals, you know. The government will come up with a treasury bill, but it is ultimately bought. So when you are talking about a product, let's look at it from this point. You have to consider the consumer, who is the consumer in this case? The consumer is the, the, yes, government comes up with the treasury bills, but the people that buy the treasury bills are individuals like you and I. You understand? So in treasury bills may not necessarily be um a product for the common market. When we say government market, that means the consumer is the government itself. So you need to understand that. Alright, good. So um the next one is the institutional market. The institutional market, now, the institutional market is um somewhat like the producer market. But it is where the, um, the, is, is what we call business to business um market. That's another name for it, business to business market, where a business is buying goods from another business. For instance, um, um, for instance, schools. Schools would buy, you know, desks and students' desks and chairs. You understand? So you at home, who are a regular consumer, will not, may not necessarily buy desks and chairs. But in the school, they will buy desks and chairs in large quantity, also, also school uniforms. You understand? So they are not, they are, they are, they are not things that a, a, another individual will buy. It is another business that will buy it from another, a business will buy it from another business. You understand? So um also things like office equipment, which are both primarily for businesses. So we call that the institutional market. Um I'm seeing Oscar, seeing Glow buys item, item from, yes, that's an institutional market, that's a good example of uh institutional market, Oscar. Yes, Joseph, stationery is computers, yes. Uh charity, you just said churches. And churches, well, churches are institutions, but yes, and then they would buy things like choir robes and things like that. Those is strictly for them, the products there don't usually go into, you know, what we call general advertising. Yes, yes, plastic rubber company sells plastic. No, that's, that's, plastic rubber company is selling plastic is raw material, so that's producer or industrial market. In the, in the street market, what they are selling is finished goods. That's the difference between the producer market and institutional market. What they are selling is, is um finished goods. Um Adetunno said most buys Abul Shonketus. No, Abul Shonketus um may generally, well, yes, you can say it's, it's, it can be institutional market, but it's more of consumer market. Because they would ordinarily market it. Now, for the way, the difference between the consumer market and institutional market is this. You would rarely, you will rarely see an advert for institutional market products. You would rarely see it. The marketing for, or the promotion for institutional marketing uh product, or institutional market product is usually, usually takes in form of, you know, um companies printing their brochures and then taking it. So for instance, if I was a school uniform producer, I would take my brochure to the school directly and tell them, look, I want to make your your school uniforms and I'll, you'll be ordering it in bulk and then you will now resell to consumers. The Zoom platform we are using, yes, it is institutional market. It is. Um Cola Ollis says, Tacos buy SIM card from, yes, that is, yes, that is correct, apparently. Yeah, so let's move on to the reseller market. The reseller market is something that many of us practice um on our own, when it was doing side businesses where we go to Balogu, buy something and then go to Instagram to sell it. I'm sure many of us here do things like that, or at least do somebody that does something like that. So basically, the seller market is where somebody goes, buys um, um a product in, probably in bulk from a cheap source and then resells it uh probably in smaller quantities to other people. So that's the reseller market. Is there anybody that is doing any kind of business like that? Yes, Menuna, like shoes. Is anybody doing something like that? Hazan, you said Sajet Omilu. Okay, yes, yes, Sajet Omilu, they will buy the box of it and then, so, yes, yes. I there is a Victor says, I'm here. So I see that there are plenty people in the market, in the reseller market here. Yes, so I think we all, we understand it. Then the last type of market. So Cola Ollis says, demand selling bags of rice and resells it in smaller quantity, yes, that's the reseller market. So let's move on to, let's move on to the, the last one, which is the global market. But when he says selling calculators to students, well, we okay, you mean in DLI, what you students do in DLI, Abi? Yes, that's the, that's the reseller market. Rashid says telecommunications, where companies buy excess amount of transmission capacity of all time from other carriers and resell it to smaller carriers. No, that's, that's, that's institutional market, Rashid. Because it's between two companies. You understand? So the last one here is um, um is um global markets. So the global market is um is when a company is selling its product across different countries. You understand? So a company like probably Coca-Cola. Coca-Cola itself is probably an American company, but we are buying uh Coca-Cola, I buy Coca-Cola from, in different countries. I there is this is Kudo, yes, Kudo too is a, is a global market product. Like for instance, Nigeria, they would get uh Kudo from Nigeria and ship it all across the world to different buyers. You know, so it's a, when it, it's when it coming, yes, uh Cola Ollis is saying of cryptocurrency and Bitcoin. Yes, that, those are global markets. Pepsi, yes. Uh Lucky says AK two four, AK, I think you mean AK forty seven weapon. AK forty seven weapon is more of government market. Because um it's going to be sold, but yes, it is sold on the global markets too, I mean, it's sold across the world. Uh Joseph says, real good, go get, yes. Hazan Tadudense says, we give lights to that country. Imagine we don't have light. We give light to that countries, uh well, that's more of institutional market. Um animal skin, leather for shoes and bags, that's producer market. Um yes, Kolakpo says Zoom, yes, Zoom is global market, Facebook is global market. So let's move on because of time. Let's move on. Alright, so let's look at, this award marketing, let's look at how it came to be in the first place. Um. From the beginning of time, people have always exchanged items. So the first type of marketing, the first form of marketing was trade by butter, trade by butter. And it is trade by butter era, as you can see from the picture, somebody is exchanging tomatoes for a cup of beans. I believe it's beans, I can't really seem to claim. But basically, in during the trade by butter uh period, there was nothing like money. So everybody, you, you use what you have to get, you know, to get other products that you might need. Uh but of course, with the introduction of money and industrialization, the, we now entered the production orientation era. Now, when people, when man was able to, to, to quickly produce, to build huge machines that could help you to produce quicker, we entered the production orientation era. Now, during the product orientation era, it was just about mass production. So people are just thinking, all we have to do, our business, we are thinking, all we have to do is to produce. And if we produce, people will buy. But of course, it's not everybody that produces that will see his market to sell. So of course, uh businesses had to move beyond the production orientation era. And then what they noticed was that because we are producing fast, they were not uh really paying attention to quality. So they now saw that, okay, it's best we start to pay attention to quality. So the quality of our product, so what they started doing was trying to improve on the quality of the products whereby before somebody that was going to sell probably a pair of shoes and then you wear the pair of shoes for, for, you wear it three times and it spoils. They will try to say, okay, let me get a pair of shoes that you can wear for two years. So what they were, were working on then was improving the quality of their products to try to see whether that will help them to improve sales. But of course, the promise, the quality of the product alone does not mean that uh I will buy because it's good quality. So they realized that even though their product was good, the, the people out there didn't really know about it and they wanted people to know about it. So they felt that the next best thing to do is to make sure that after producing things of high quality, you need to let people know, you need to push it out. You need to promote it, you need to sell it. So you just take, you know, sending out salespeople to talk to people that, look, you need to buy my products. These products are available, this one is available, these products are available. So the product or selling orientation era was geared towards, you know, getting the products out there, letting people, letting people know that these products were available. But yes, when I did it, people were, I know about your products, but what if I don't want? You understand? I, I probably didn't need your products in the first place. It doesn't, you know, you are just telling me about it, you don't know whether it is something that I'm interested in or not. That's speaking as the consumer. So um when they saw that the selling orientation wasn't working, they had to come up with the marketing concept. So what the marketing concept was selling was that you have to first go out to meet the customer and ask the customer, what exactly do you want? So that you will now produce what the customer says they want and you produce it in a way that will satisfy the customer. So that was the birth of the modern, um, this is our modern marketing. Where they said, they said, why don't we first ask the customer? The customer may just have an idea of what he wants and it's better if we ask the customer and produce exactly what the customer says they want. And that was the birth of our modern day, uh, modern day, the um marketing. Yes, Adazi says, market service era. That's, that's when, that's what we have here today, where they are asking the customer what they want. Alright, so the marketing concept era says that marketing begins and ends with the customer. But it has gone beyond, Oscar says customized production, yes, something like that. But marketing has now gone beyond just what the customer wants. So we now, what we are in today is what we call the societal marketing era, era. Now, the societal marketing era um says that you should not just be concerned about making profit, but whatever you are making should be able to add value to the society. You understand? And that if you are able to improve on, um, add value to the society, then your product would be, um, customers consume your products for a longer period of time. You understand? Um so I'm looking for an example of societal marketing, um. Um okay, I, I don't know if you guys have heard of um this uh This company that does uh that does savings, I'm trying to remember the name. Uh who can give me any examples? If you can think of any examples, you can also uh chat it to us. Uh, okay, something like Facebook. You know, Facebook um came as, no, financial instruments don't really help people. Facebook, yes, Piggyvers is what I was looking for. So Piggyvers were offering a way that you could save save money and then they will now pay you uh interest in return. So, you know, as a consumer of 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 Piggyvers, you get extra value because you get to save your money. But then the money is working for you and you get returns on your interestment or your investment. So you can see that Piggyvers is adding extra value to the society generally. Uh another one that I see was Facebook. Techno K nine says you can't hear anything. I I believe I believe we started this uh hearing. Um, Mina says Lapu. Financial institutions, do they care about you? Are they adding any extra value? Look at something like Facebook. Facebook is offering a service for free. You understand? And the Facebook started as a ma- as a way to connect people. Facebook started as a way to connect people. So it was free and people were, you know, jumping on it and then you could finally you could talk to. Your long lost friend who are good, you have not seen in a long time. You understand? And you just connect and the person is abroad and both of you just connect, you start talking again. So you were offering that societal. Um benefits of connecting people. And many people wonder, how was Facebook making its money? Now, what they were doing was that the more people that came on Facebook, the more people they could sell adverts to, they could show adverts to. So by the time they had over five billion people on Facebook. You know, if you can show adverts to five billion people, you're making quite a lot of money. So you see that Facebook used a roundabout way. They first did what would pay the society, what would improve the society by helping people to connect. And then from there, they were able to make their money. So more and more and more businesses are taking that, are using that model now. They are offering things free of charge in order to build a following. So somebody said Instagram, yes, Instagram is a good example. Google is a fantastic example. So they are offering people value. For almost nothing and then they are making their money from other uh from other ways. Yes, uh Facebook, WhatsApp, Instagram, fantastic ideas. So. Yes, uh Chin we said by making world a global village at little cost, that's exactly what they are doing. YouTube is a fantastic idea. So YouTube is entertaining people and they are getting that that um that value of that entertainment. But at the end of the day, they are making their money from you. As much as you as you continue to use YouTube, they are making their money. You understand? So it's at low cost to you, the consumer, but other people are paying for it. So InterSwitch, yes, InterSwitch is also a good because InterSwitch, they are just, they are creating value, they are helping you to to make purchases online. They are helping you to withdraw from the from the ATM machine and it's all costing you little or nothing, but the banks are paying. You understand? So that's um social, yes, um YouTube of Zoom. Zoom is a a good example of uh societal marketing. Because they have the free service and once you try it and you see that, oh, this thing actually works, you can actually use it. Now, we are we are we are speaking now over the a premium Zoom account. So you like us had to pay Zoom in order for us to be able to connect as many as as many as three hundred or four hundred people to a class. So and they did that because they were able to, people were able to test it using the free version. They can use the free version and use it for up to forty minutes and then it will cut off. So, yeah, so, yes, Shogo Shobo Gubi says they are making money, their money through traffic on their websites. Yes, that's true. And I I buy a main LinkedIn, yes, LinkedIn is also um an example of the societal marketing uh product. Alright, let's move on. So the last uh the last uh uh form of marketing is relationship marketing. Relationship marketing is based on the assumption that by building and maintaining effective network of relationships with key stakeholders, profits should be. Realized. Now, relationship marketing is what the banks do. Where they try, you know, they will call you, they will, your store, your account officer will call you. They wish you happy birthday on your birthday, you know, they would. If you'll be, they will call you, do you need money for your business and things like that? So they are trying to build. Uh a network of relationships with their customers so that those ones will borrow money at the end of the day. You understand? So if you're a big businessman, you probably have the the business, the your ba- your banking officer calling you regularly. I mean, I just came to check on you, but because they want, they don't want you to take your money out of the bank, you are trying to develop that relationship. Alright. So. Um, let's look at some of the functions of man of marketing. We have two different kinds of uh two different kinds of functions, of key classes of functions. We have the micro functions, which are. Um, Aubamey said like D S T V, yes, D S T V is a good idea, uh example of relationship marketing. So um we have micro functions and we have macro functions. Alright, so let's look at the micro functions. So um what we mean by micro functions are the core, the core reasons why we do marketing. Because we have core reasons why we do marketing and then we have some things that are a fallout of marketing. You understand? Okay, um AK Goodlock says throw more light on relationship marketing. Alright, so let's go back then. So relationship marketing i- is where, you know, businesses would reach out to, they have the. They they is like um this uh. Multi-level marketing that they do, this one that you say, you can bring two people. Or you can you can get four people to join you, then you start getting the higher part of the the. The um profits, you know, network marketing, basically. So basically, what you are just trying to do is you are trying to build a relationship with your customer. You are trying to build a relationship with your customer. Like for instance, if you look at something like somebody like uh businesses like supermarkets. Supermarkets will try to to supermarkets will try to. Oh, you know, it says, yes, more or less network marketing, yes, it's like network marketing, but not, it's not just network marketing. Like if you go to a supermarket, if you go to a a big supermarket, you see that some of them, they do things like um customers um. Regular customers cards, where they say, okay, if you shop ten times, by the tenth time you shop, you know, you will get some sort of uh discount. On your tenth purchase or something like that. Why are they doing that? They are doing that so that they can build. So that they can, yes, customer loyalty card. They are doing that so that they can build a a a relationship with the customer. And that relationship, you know, is geared towards making the customer, you know, come back over and over and over again. Uh, Kelly, this is like customers week that we do advance, yes, customer week. Yes, they do that at spa, I there is, yes, you are right, I there is. So um Victor says getting contacted by marketing company. Um, well, something like that, yes. Well, it says customer gives weekly gifts, yes, things like that. So basically, I just tried to build. For the customer to be happy with you so that they 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 keep coming back. Is a selling owner and customer in relationship marketing and the the relationship. About introduction to my, uh we'll try, America, we will try, we will try, we are able to finish on time. Yes, so by me, Black Friday, Black Friday on June is like relationship marketing, yes. Uh, about me saying sending by the wishes and greetings, yes, exactly. So you are just doing whatever you can just to make the customer feel as if you are his friend. Because if the customer feels comfortable with you, the customer, the customer will continue to to patronize you. So that's what relationship marketing is about. So let's move on because of time. So those are people that you don't introduce your hand, just send me a message. Alright, so the one of the core functions of marketing is market research and sales forecasting. So um so market research is about doing a market analysis. Remember I told you that when the marketing uh concept era came into being. You have to now go out and ask the customers, what do you really need? Tell us the things you need so that we can produce for you. So the that is one of the core functions of marketing, to do a market analysis and estimate and estimates. And an estimate of the monetary or unit sales of a product or service. And it provides uh information for the marketing strategy of the organization. Once you can know that, okay, your your customers want to buy a cup, for instance, that's what they need, that's what your customers need now, you need a cup. And they are ready to pay one hundred now for that cup. Then you already have the information you need, you you know, to sell uh that cup uh successfully. Uh, yes, we have one uh melody, we have gone back to micro functions, yes. So um the next function is product planning and development. So you have done your market analysis, you have known that what people want is a cup. But now you have to plan for that for that cup. Is it a red cup you want? Is it a tall cup? Is it a short cup? What kind of cup? Should it be plastic? Should it be um should it be glass? You know, so you have to plan for that cup and for that product and and develop it and know that what you are developing. Is as a result of your marketing analysis. Then, once you have designed your your product finish, you have to design the price, you have to now know the pricing. Because, yes, when you when you went to do a market analysis, they told you, oh, I can pay one hundred now for this. But by the time you finish developing, you realize that this cup, it costs me uh one hundred and twenty nine to make. So you have to go back to the pricing board and then try and play, okay, because more than twenty and you said one hundred now before. What if I say that I wanted to, will they buy, would they or would they reject it? So you have to settle your pricing and it's also still, it still means that you have to go back to the market uh and uh to get to another analysis. So the you use um marketing to, marketing is about setting the correct price. Then the next thing uh you need to set, once you have set your price, is promotion. How do you let the customer know that the product is out there? So depending on the kind of products, you would be choosing different kinds of promotional activities. You understand? Sometimes you can use adverts on TV, sometimes you can go to supermarkets, I'm shopping, I was I've gone. So, yes, these are, these are all micro functions, these are all micro functions. We will soon get to macro functions. These are all my, we are still discussing my micro function. Like I said, micro functions are the core functions of um of marketing, the core, the main reason why we do do marketing, the core functions. So your production, you have to determine your promotional mix. Um, I'm sure many of us have been to a supermarket before where you will see. Where you see that um uh so where you, some people, some agents of businesses who are who approach you and say, oh. We are selling, we are doing bonanza on our hand cream today, we buy two, give you one free and things like that. So, you know, that is a promotional uh activity right there. So you have to, once you have developed your product, you have set the price, you have to know the best way, you have to decide the best way to get it. The the information that the product is available to your customer, which is the promotion function of um marketing. Then, once you have told the customer that this product is available, the next thing you have to do is decide the best way to get it. Um, only it says Domino's Pizza buy one get one free, exactly, that's promotion. So is 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 to stimulate um the customer in the customer's interest in uh your products, yes. So once the customer is interested in your product, he knows about your product, the next function is the distribution function. How do you get the product to the customer? What's the best way? Is it through um using retailers? Well, we might not know what retailers are, but we will discuss it some during the course of the course of the um of this course. Um, then we are discussing, we are going in depth in into the distribution function. Um, so Aubamey says using a courier service, yes, that may be one of the ways that you can get it from you, the browser to the to the uh customer. Um, Melody says, for example, Biggie drinks came into the market, it's an introductory introductory offer of seventy-five milliliters. Of soft drink for hundred now about three years ago. Till this, they haven't been able to reduce the size or increase the price. Would you say they had a great business strategy? Biggie, um when Biggie came in, they came in with a bang. And they sent, and you know Coca-Cola, they they disturbed Coca-Cola a lot. Coca-Cola had to go and bring out their solo Coke. In order to fight Biggie because by that time Coca-Cola was selling for, was it not one hundred and twenty now? And Biggie just came in and undercaught them and many people said buy Biggie because of that. Because you get more money for less mo- uh for, you get more uh more soft drink for less money and it was a, it was a fairly good. Business strategy, but it's not a business strategy that you can use for a long time. Because at the end of the day, the quality of your products will will will, yes, uh, even Pepsi had to do twenty percent extra. You understand? So um it was, it was, it was a very good, it's a good business strategy, but it may not be. A long-term business strategy because at the end of the day, you are still fighting Coke. Coke has more money than you. So at the end of the day, Coke was just do what they did, they introduce, they would introduce a new product. Which will now worry because now solo now made sense because I mean. You you it it was, it was still Coca-Cola and you can you can sell it at parties and it was hundred now and people were rushing in for parties because. I mean, you don't want to come to a party and then you are now serving them Biggie. You want to look like a classy person and serve them Coke. So that solo, you know, made a lot of sense and that was what Coca-Cola used to buy back the market then. Um, close up bringing different types of toothpaste to battle, yes. Yes, um uh Lucky, that is kind of like uh that, all this is on pricing function anyway. We are now on distribution function. So we will still go in depth, this is just an introduction to all these terms so that you can understand what we mean when we say distribution. But we will still go in depth to see the different types of uh distribution channel, alright? So um another function of um of marketing is credit management and financing. So um in some cases, you might have to give your customer credit. Aubamey said, yes, distribution can be fried. So in some, in some cases, you might have to give your customers credit. You understand? So that they can buy. So that they can buy and um uh they can buy more, you understand? So. Back in, but ma- marketing will help you to um to know whether this customer is credit worthy because you have done your market survey. And your market analysis, so you know whether this customer is credit is credit worthy and you can provide finance for him to be able to um. To be able to 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 buy more of your products. So that's a key function of uh of um market of 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 marketing, credit management and finance. Uh, I didn't, yes, credit management is is still under Michael. It's still under Michael. Maryam Bank of Industry gives credit to SMS, yes. Um, Rema says easy buy, yes, something like that, yes, for you mean the airtime, uh airtime, right? Yes, that is uh uh a good example of credit money uh credits. Um, Lucky said, some retailers selling on credit to their customers, yes. Especially when you are selling large items like electronics and um and home equipment. You know, that people may not readily have the money for. You can use, uh you can give them credits and then they will pay back over overtime. Alright, so now let's look at the macro functions of um the macro functions of uh marketing. Uh, these are, these are the uh things that happen, you know, because you have to carry down marketing, so they are like. Extra, the extras, the things that you you get because of marketing. For instance, it helps to direct the allocation of resources and leads to better decisions. So once you are able to do your marketing and you can get your marketing information, as a business owner, you will be able to make better decisions. Alright, number two, it is a vital source of employment and career opportunities. Yes, we have, you know, professional marketers who are hired by businesses and they are doing well. And as I told you, it's a top management function, so once you are a marketer, you are in the top management of the business. Number three, it improves the standard of living of people by moving products from areas of surplus to areas of shortage. Now, what we mean by this is that because you have done your market analysis and you know that, okay. Um, in this area, what they don't have is shoes. There was a a, you know, a joke. Where they said, where one company sent um, one company sent their salesman to a town. To to the the company sells shoes and they send the salesman to to see whether. To, 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 they, they, the company sells shoes and they send the salesman to, to see whether. They were going to be, they were going to be able to sell in that town. And when the man got there, he saw that nobody in the town was wearing shoes. And he said, they don't wear shoes here. So he went back to the customer, to the, to his boss and said. That shoe, that town, they don't wear shoes there. It's a terrible town, there's no good there. The boss now said, is that serious? So yeah, let's, he now sent another person. Who was a marketer. And by the time the marketer got there, he sent back water, stop bringing shoes, there are no shoes here at all. That if we bring shoes, we get them to wear it. You understand? So, and that's, if you're a marketing, um, we're marketing. Um, analysis, it will tell you where you need to push your products. So places where they shut, shutted their products, you'll be able to know it and then you're going to move there. Um, Amaka says, number one, it helps to direct the allocation of resources and leads to better decision. Yes, I said that. Once you have done your market analysis, you will be able to make better decisions because it will arm you with information. That will help you to make, you know, better decisions, better business decisions. Alright, so marketing promotes interaction among people from different cultural, religious and racial background. Yes, because by the time you are moving from place to place, by the time you are, you, by the time you are promoting. Your, your, your product and you are meeting people and you are talking, you will get to interrelate with many different kinds of people. That are quite different from you. And it's all because, you know, you are trying to market your products. Uh, marketing is vital to industrialization, yes. If you don't, if you don't do marketing. It's because when you do, is when you do, like, for instance, now I see somebody like, um, like Danguti, that is doing, is uh, is. Um, refinery, Danguti refinery. It is due to the fact that he has done some marketing, I've seen that Nigeria has the crowd. He has the, and we have the money to pay for the, for, for the petrol. So it makes sense to, to actually set up a refinery in Nigeria. Because he had the money, he could have set it off in another country and, you know, it would still have been profitable, but because he had been able to do some market research. He knew that it worked if he put it in Nigeria. Um, marketing is applied in politics and nonprofit organizations, yes, of course. I'm sure you know, remember that during elections, you see the politicians, you know. Telling you, we will provide you light, we will provide you, um, we will provide you portable water, provide you good roads. They didn't judge, they are not just promising those things. It's because they've gone to do some marketing and they know that this is what customers uh want. And then the final one, uh, um, at the international level. Uh, marketing creates geographical specialization and exchange among countries, yes. Because um countries, like for instance, we said their products are sold globally on global markets. So Coca-Cola will not just come and just enter any country. They need to be sure that. There's enough people, they have enough people that like sugar uh things. Like, for instance, um. Like, for instance, um, you, you, uh. I'm trying to look for a, a, a product that won't sell in some countries. Okay, like, for instance, um. If you are, if, if you are, you are producing Korans. You understand? You, you won't, you won't carry your Quran into a country that is largely Christian. You know that you might not make a lot of sales there. So you look for countries that are, um, that are. Okay, yes, Lucky said Akoli Mecca. That's right, Akoli is, in Mecca, it, it, if I, I'm a product, uh, producer. You will not go to Mecca because you know that you, you, you may not be able to sell there. Um, Maria says, do you have to have a market, have marketing skills or talent like an orator to be a good marketer? Not necessarily. Marketing is, is, there are, there are sales, the sales that you are, you are seeing confusing in marketing. Anyway, then move on. So let's do a summary of what we have learned. So in this module, in this study session, you have learnt. That marketing is a discipline that deals with identification of needs and wants of the market. Providing, performing other specialized function and exchanging the products to satisfy the needs of both the producer and consumers. Um, selling is a vital aspect of marketing by converting all the output of the marketing efforts into sales revenue. And profits to the producer. You have also learned the types of markets. Um, to in- include personal consumers, resellers, producers or industrialists. Governments, institutions and foreign or global consumers. Uh, Emma, uh, Emma who does say selling sweaters inside that desert, it won't work now. Yes, I will, I will, it will be put on the elements, the slides will be on the elements and I would also, I'm also recording the video. I will upload it to the uh, to the elements as well. Definitely will get it to you. And then the final thing you have learnt and is the origin and evolution of marketing. You know, how it started from trade by barter, through production, product, selling era, marketer, or uh, marketing orientation era. Societal orientation to relationship marketing. And you also learnt how marketing performs both micro and macro functions. So this brings us to the end of um the class. I hope you have all uh enjoyed this. Um, if you have any questions, please send them now. We'll take some questions for the next five minutes. Pardon, I didn't get that.
I said the time is already up.
Oh, okay. Alright, no problem. You can send your questions to the elements and I will answer them then. Send your questions to me via the elements. Thank you very much. Have a nice day. It is an investment.